I didn't know if it was that big of a deal or if you just put the date on it and people can figure out what time it is.
Yeah, we started. You're live, Mr. Turner.
Okay, welcome everybody. Today is Monday, October 18th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I would please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Dave for leading us. Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. Don't think we have anything that's too emergent to be added, so I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for today.
Second.
Would you second on favor, please say aye. Aye, motion carries. Meeting minutes of October 12th, this is an action item. And they all looked good to me. Any other comments?
I read them, but I don't know. What's right or wrong, so I can't approve them.
I'd say they looked good to me. I caught a couple typos and that was it.
I'll make a motion then we approve the minutes of October 12th.
Second.
Would you second? Any more discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is in about 12 minutes. This is an action item, so we'll have to wait for our road and bridge superintendent before we can do that.
Our 11 o'clock. Not gonna happen either. Because I didn't get the appraisal back.
So that one comes off?
Maybe, you know what? Let's, let's do that though, because then we can discuss a potential. Uh, conversation there. Regarding that.
Doug, you know, is there code or something we have to follow for redistricting? We, we just do the commissioners, right? We don't do school boards or any of that. Do we?
There's a code, because I read it.
Yeah, again, Brian.
Brian's gonna do that one.
Yeah, Brian provided an email, but he thought that he could come in and present. If not, I will. Share with you his research that was conducted.
Brian sent us an email?
Uh, Brian O'Keefe, I asked him to, I wrote to the, um, form, request for legal advice. Here's what I indicated, since the 2020 census has been completed, the Vella County Board of County Commissioners is inquiring the need and requirements to redistrict the existing boundaries. I have attempted to research the question and found Idaho Code 31704. Uh, but it isn't clear on the steps that need to be taken. It just indicates in the January after a general election. Um, and then he conducted his legal research, submitted an email to me last week. And I put it on the agenda for him or myself to present to the commissioners today.
Uh, we didn't get one directly.
You did not, my.
Okay, perfect. And it was astonishing to travel to different states and see their road conditions. You guys noticed that traveling? Getting into Montana and their roads are like freeway, every single one of them. I don't care if you're in the back area or not.
Yeah, Oregon's the same way. You hit the state line. Like down in the Wauhies, you know, you're driving south on 95 and you hit the Oregon state line going on any of those, any of those highways. It's like, it goes from being rough, chip sealed to like perfect blacktop.
Did you happen to get your magistrate commission mail in?
Yep. I did that last weekend. You got the Zoom notice for Thursday?
Yep.
It's kinda hard to know with that one that was already a judge. We gotta talk about that first, because. That kinda skews everybody else. Really interesting to read some of the comments that the bar makes and other attorneys make. It's like, ooh.
Hey Doug. Um, McKenzie and I had a conversation about. She is charging time right now for the COVID task force. Uh, twice a month and then some extra time on top of that. She was wondering, you know, if that, if we need to take that off the county and separate her time for that. I know Juan just sent out, uh, information about some funding available from the federal government again on COVID. I'm wondering if, you know, what would be the best direction to go? Apply for funding for her on that COVID task force or the COVID task force try and find funding separately? In order to.
I mean.
Try and take care of her time.
The county would prefer that, but. I mean, right now we're going to be trying to get reimbursed for all of those costs, but the county currently is paying that bill. And that was something that was agreed upon previously. But it doesn't, and there was a thought that that, that task force would be wrapping up and we wouldn't be needing her services. Unfortunately, that's not the case, so. Expenses continue to occur and the county is paying for those with the understanding that we were going to try to get reimbursed for those.
There's no CARESAC funding left, right?
No, not for, for that, there's not.
So the Office of Emergency Management just came out with another COVID fund. So Juan is stating that, I mean, there may be funding available through that. I don't know, you know, whatever.
Probably something that we can put on the agenda for the commissioners to.
Why don't we do that, just to have that conversation to make sure that we are. Utilizing funds. She is sensitive to that and actually reached out to me on it. So it's. I think it's important we decide that and try and figure out a pathway forward. Oh Hannah and I are gonna go to the. Meeting, which day is it? December 9th in Weezer. It's the elected officials, the Fall County Officials Institute, if anybody wants to ride along. Had an email about the road up on Lakeway and Crown Point Parkway. Morning.
Morning.
Um, I sent it on to Jeff and he responded. Did you guys have any conversations on that?
Nope.
Are you guys waiting for the next item?
It was on October 7th.
Oh, yes.
On Red Sayers.
Just need to ask.
It's just us.
I'm gonna.
Are you guys this morning?
Or are you some stuff?
Are you guys this morning?
What's your name?
Candy, one's wife.
We're still streaming.
Just unbelievable. Surreal.
Those events that just cause us to continue thinking about what's going on.
Is there any heartburn with me?
Not calling foul this morning. Like, you know, it's just bizarre.
Rudy Anderson's asked me to.
I don't have that.
Zoom into the, doing democracy.
Hold that back over to me.
Sure. On moratoriums tomorrow night. Any issues?
I don't think so.
So I'll just listen in and answer any questions.
I think that's appropriate. Say Ralph, did you find anybody for? For the board yet?
For what board?
Chair.
Oh. Southwest Idaho Resource Co., what is it called? Sward?
He's not on that one anymore.
I think so. Think so.
Do we make that appointment or does?
No, it's up to the, it's up to the visiting board.
And that's an election, isn't it?
Only during the election period. They can fill it for the interim. I learned in state statute, they can fill it for the interim. But then during the primary, those positions that become vacant.
You voted on it? Okay, we're gonna move on down to our next agenda item. This is an action item. This is a discussion decision on recreational vehicle grant. A road superintendent Jeff. Come on up Jeff. And this is for the truck?
So Larry put in for a grant for half the price of a new pickup. For the Parks and Rec Department. It'll be a one ton, uh, cab chassis. Doing a flatbed on it with toolboxes. Be a little more suited for him. You guys okayed it. Um, for some reason, I had $32,000 stuck in my head. That's what went in the grant.
The truck is more than that.
Pickup came in at 42.
So you're taking that out of your salary? I'm just joking. So you want it to come out of our salary?
No, he's probably, he's like, yeah.
How much is the grant?
So the grant equaled. Think they were gonna give us, let me just second here, 16. 16, 236 for the pickup. $1,400 for a flatbed. $325 for toolboxes. And a thousand dollars for labor to fit it all on.
We need a new vehicle, so.
Exactly.
Just have to.
Jeff called me last week or we talked and I said, let's just get it on the agenda and we'll all talk about it, but I, you know, I said the same thing. I said, we need to purchase a vehicle. We already have grant money going towards it.
I, I'm putting this all on me because I, I just don't, I don't know where Larry, Larry drives a half ton pickup. For some reason, that 32,000 hits, it's that half ton pickup number. Um, we opened bids last week on that. One ton and it was 42. 42, 997. So Parks and Rec will still pay that, those numbers I just read off. But somewhere along the line, we gotta come up with that extra, about $10,000.
Actually, if I figured right, Jeff, it was 25,036. That's the difference between those three numbers and your 42,000.
Right, but we had already agreed to pay. That, that matching number. So those numbers I read off, we agreed a few months ago when Larry was doing his grant that. Pilt was gonna pay for. That other half, so we need to come up with that extra almost right at $10,000. The other half of that pickup's already been approved by the commission. But the bid came in 10,000 more than what we were expecting.
I think we take that out of pill.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
See how easy that was?
Yeah.
Your truck.
I actually lost sleep over.
I was gonna say Larry was upset too.
Well, and this is an action item, so I need a motion from somebody to. Kind of explain what we're doing there.
I move that we approve the additional expense not previously identified for the vehicle for the Recreation Department and take those funds from Pilt.
I'll second that.
Would you second? Any more discussions? Will that work Doug?
Yep.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, so you guys didn't say a dollar amount, so. We're not gonna spend anything extra than we need to, so it's gonna be right around that $10,000 mark.
Well, we got the bid already. We opened.
Okay.
If I figure right, it's total's gonna be, like you said, what did I say, 25?
About 25. I mean, the flatbed price was.
25,036 dollars.
Flatbed price was four months ago. Might've went up $500. Toolboxes might've went up $100 apiece.
More in there.
Kind of the way everything's running right now.
As I say, I would order that quickly because nothing's going down in price anytime soon.
Right, and I went in and talked to Kathy about this and she goes. We can order it, but who knows when we're gonna get it, when it's even gonna get built.
And that was my question. So this vehicle will be an additional one for the rec department. So you'll keep the one you have?
Won't be additional. We're gonna move that 95 Chevy duly over to facilities.
It's a pretty tired truck.
Yes.
But Larry's department, I mean, if Danny's going one direction, Larry's going the other direction.
Oh, yes, yes, that'll give him a little newer, dependable.
So there's still, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still confused Jeff. There's only one vehicle in that department correct, currently, or there are two in there right now?
There, there's two.
Okay, thank you.
This is to replace the very tired duly Chevy, Chevy duly, essentially. They need something they can pull equipment with and.
Perfect, thank you.
Jeff, I don't know if you've noticed that, but there's a lot of white. Half, or three quarter, one ton Dodges with flatbeds driving around and I did some research and Larry Miller has a whole. Section of those kind of trucks down there already here, already built. And they're kind of commercial grade trucks. In your spare time, he might, one weekend if you're down there going by and look, that's where I ended up buying my Dodge. I'm not pushing Larry Miller, but these trucks are already here sitting in a lot with a flatbed on them, most of them.
Yep.
And when I was there, they probably had 40.
I can make phone calls on them. But Larry Miller's not part of the state bid people. Doesn't mean we can't buy from them. But that state bid, talking to the gentleman at Mountain Home Auto Ranch, they make a hundred dollars. That's it, off state bid price. But I, I can make a phone call.
Well, honestly, what I'm more concerned about is we're not gonna see these trucks for. A year and a half or maybe even up to three years.
At least a year.
And I don't know if we can wait that long. So we may, you may wanna check into that, come back and say, hey, I can buy one right now for X amount of dollars from this dealer. That's what we want.
It's ready to go.
It's gonna be more money, but it's here and it's ready to go and we, because this is gonna start backing up everywhere, same, same thing with the sheriff.
Starting?
It's started, yeah.
It's already started.
We're not gonna get these cars or rigs for a long time.
Yeah.
And it's gonna stop process.
Well, they're, all these big dealers are closing out their 21s also. Pretty good deals on them.
You might give Larry Miller a call and talk to the guy, see what they've got. I went through and looked at it before I ended up buying another truck off the lot, but.
I'll Dave Smith too and come on and see what he's got. I mean, he's got. I, I can't believe how many vehicles he had up there.
Well, if we're talking about doing that, I can. Every place, Mountain Home Auto Ranch has. One tons, three quarter tons already set up with flatbeds on them.
Well, I, I just don't wanna get us two years out behind and we can't get anything done because we don't have rigs and.
Already, it's already happening with the sheriff's office.
We're just gonna wear out the ones we have twice as fast.
Right.
That doesn't make sense either, so check, maybe check into that or have somebody, Larry, you had a.
Yeah, just the, the comment I'd make is, is this vehicle that's being replaced, it's the one that we haul fuel with. And, um, I've been really concerned. We've, I bet we put. $35,000, $4,000 a year in maintenance into that thing already and it's just, um, I'm hauling fuel like that. I want the best piece of equipment we got. Thank you.
And when you do that, you put the tanks on the flatbed or you take a trailer tank?
No, we're gonna put a, the large tank on the flatbed. Safest way to haul.
Yeah, that's the safest way. Keep that weight on top of you instead of behind you.
And we're not allowed to have, uh, fuel tanks on the Forest Service, um, grooming lots, so we have to haul the fuel in.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Easy peasy.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a great day.
You too.
Are you here for the U of I extension?
Yes.
Can we go ahead and do that now Doug? Or should we wait six minutes?
I think that we should probably wait, Mr. Turner.
You know, is Melissa coming up and all that?
Melissa's not.
On vacation.
On vacation. That's why I'm here, to get signatures.
Okay, well, we got it. We should probably wait another six minutes before we get to the lot of time, so. Anybody needs a break, this would be a good time to take it.
How's it going over there?
Good.
Good. Bet you're busy, busy. Just wrapping up.
And we're starting the new 4H year, so.
He's getting busy.
Getting busy.
Good thing.
My winters are so nice up here. It's slow.
I can't wait for December.
Yeah, we did. Just kind of another round robin. What are our options? No, we were just talking about different options, how we could do that. It started with fairgrounds. We were talking about, you know. How much money do we wanna put into the fairgrounds? What's our big plan for that, that shop, that whole area?
The road department, uh, or the road advisory group had a long conversation about that also. And moving a lot of that stuff to.
Lakeport. Well, that's what I was suggesting is like, we just said, hey, Little Donner, everything north is gonna be taken care of by the. Facility up there. And then we do some improvements, but not like the whole improvement down at Goldus. We have two great facilities. Instead of building like a huge mega, I mean, we were talking about price, you know, it's like. The else, it's something, oh, the price of this is $3 million. I was like. I don't think you can build a house for $3 million right now, much less like a maintenance shop. So, you know, that's, that's what I said. I think there's, there's tons of room to expand in Lakeport too. Even to the east, you know, there's all those weird little sheds. I don't even know what they store in there. It's like, seems like there's a couple pieces of equipment.
There's a whole office up there. There's a whole room, you know?
Well, that's the thing, is it checks a lot of boxes. It's office space. You know, it's room to grow as far as the size of the operation.
That was gonna be come back as a conversation from the road advisory group too.
It's good.
Are we doing in? And they were wondering too, why are we spending money on renting Donley facility? Why are we not just building our own facility? Even though Doug sent me something that was, it's not that expensive. But still, over 10 years, you could build your own building. I think it was, well, we gotta pay for the power. And then. Send it to me, but I can't remember off the top of my head. Tried to forget everything for two weeks, so. Oh, it's, it's 5321 a year, plus $800 a month for. It didn't take that long to build a facility. Do you know if they've ever talked about facility and. Doing something different in Donley?
They have not.
Road advisory group wants to have that discussion, so.
Yeah, they, they have not.
I mean, you put it out at. Good lane. You know, at Pet, even. They've said, well, it's another five, 10 minutes to get to Donley Central. We already have that ground.
Yeah, that's not that much of a.
Not that far.
Honestly, it's. A slow moving truck, ain't it? 12 minutes to go from Lakeport to Donley. Said there's tons of room to expand there.
I think it's all personal preference. A lot of the office team lives down here. I don't know where the new one lives.
She's gonna be in, oh yeah, she does live in Cascade.
Other than that, to work. Did talk about the fact that broadband up there would need to be approved upon.
Well, you know what I was talking about, even from a point of view. Jeff is the soup and then we have a, this assistant. Like maybe that's how it splits. And they still work together on everything, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
Assistant's at Lakeport and. Uh, there's lots of ways to set it up. It seems like we're not doing the best service right now, but again, my whole thing was it comes back. The fairgrounds. In particular. I mean, that's a huge invest, investment for something that's not getting utilized very often.
It needs to be, it needs to be a facility that can be utilized.
Right.
I mean, it needs to be something where we actually have an income stream off of it that's going back into that property. And currently.
And how much we're willing to spend for whatever that little bit of income would be. You know, I mean, how much you're gonna get for events.
But however, I mean, Valley County has always had a fair. And rodeo, it's an important part of our history. And I think that, you know, that group deserves to have facilities.
I think my question was just like, how much of that is taxpayer responsibility?
For counties, it's all taxpayer. I mean, that's how it's funded. It just never has been here.
It just hasn't been. Contained and.
Yeah, it's in poor shape. It's gonna take some investments.
For sure.
And, you know, we've never looked for grants, moved their grants out there. There was one that just came about that there was a $50,000 grant that. Um, they're writing for from, I think it's T-Mobile. Or rodeo grounds. Some sponsor.
It seems like some of the money that's potentially coming out right now. Utilized for some of that as well.
What are you guys here for? Agenda.
We're about to redistrict you.
Oh, perfect. That one's, oh, good, 9:30, got it.
Somewhere around 9:30, I think.
I was gone for 10 days and I didn't have to wake up to an alarm and it was the best thing ever. So I woke up all last night, like every two hours going, I'm gonna miss my alarm. I'm gonna miss my alarm.
We just came back from a week on the coast.
We went to Montana, dropped down into Wyoming, spent some days in Cody. And then we're gonna go into the park. So park was open when we left Cody. We drove 50 miles to the park entrance. It was closed. Cause it was snowing. Turned around, headed south to Riverton, came over a pass that was 9500 feet at the southern end of the park to get into Jackson Hole. It blew up all of my vitamin capsules. It takes, all of the water bottles we had inside the trailer all just went crazy. Yeah, it was a little sketch because it was snowing there too, so I'm screaming at my husband, slow down, put on the brakes. It's a little hairy dropping down into Jackson, but we made it.
Camper performed well?
It did. Yeah, we really enjoyed our camper. I was really surprised on the vitamin capsules. I'm looking at them going, what happened? I realized, huh, it probably just blew apart.
Elevation will do that. Think about those bags of the July chips or whatever they are from Costco when you come.
Oh, yeah.
Up here.
Yeah. It was beautiful though. The very first dusting of snow is, it just highlights those peaks down there. Oh, man. Gorgeous.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Our next item is also an action item. This is to approve the U of I standardized extension agreement. So come on up. The mic please.
Uh, Melissa put this together and she's got little tabs of where they need to be signed by each commissioner and by Doug. And then I need to get the clerk's office seal so I can mail it into the U of I.
Hey, you want to bring it on up? We haven't approved this yet, have we, Jill?
No.
All those?
Commissioners there, Doug here, and there's another one for Doug.
From over there.
We did discuss this with Melissa Alt though, week that you were gone.
That's what I thought.
So, yeah, we, we looked over.
But you didn't make a motion to approve it?
We did not, no.
So then I would entertain a motion to, well, I didn't do that now if you were.
I'll make the motion that we approve the University of Idaho standardized extension agreement.
A second.
Moved in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Melissa did send out, and I think she sent it to everybody, a survey that talks about what services we would like to see extension working on. So that, it was a great survey. I would recommend everyone take that. You on like the third page or something?
Ralph and Pam, are you guys here for the redistricting discussion? Hey, Brian. Good weekend?
Yes.
Like you could have laid out in the sun yesterday. It was so nice.
Beautiful quality.
Yeah. Yep, just what we need. The burn ban goes off tomorrow, twentieth, day after tomorrow. Five, 10 to 10:20, and then you don't need burning permits, but I still don't think I'd burn yet.
Supposed to rain the following week.
Forest Service has thirty-some thousand acres they want to burn this fall.
Stuff that they're burning on the Burnage Road looks good. It's all the piles that they cleaned up. It looks really good in the.
If you just want to take this down to Ralph's, they can put that seal on it.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Jill.
Thank you.
Hey, we're going to move on down to our agenda. Um, this is not an action item. This is a discussion regarding the process of redistricting, redistricting of commissioner districts. Brian, I think you're leading the show on this one. And I don't think I've ever done this, so this is going to be a new one.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Oki with the prosecutor's office. Doug submitted a, a request to kind of go over some of the steps that would be required to do redistricting. Now that we've got the, the census information back that was recently completed. I, I suspect that you're familiar with the one section of Idaho code that deals with, uh, commission, commissioner redistricting. It's, uh, Title 31, Chapter 704. And it doesn't give a whole lot of guidance on what steps you need to take to make sure that you're complying with the law in redistricting. It just says that each county shall have three districts and each of those three districts will be as equal in population as possible. So I did do a little bit of research and, um, there is. There, there's more pages than I can read in, in a lifetime on redistricting at the state level. And as you can imagine, those have become very, uh, those have become very litigious decisions. Lots of Supreme Court cases, uh, when legislative districts are reapportioned. As much as there is on redistricting for the state level, there's very, very little on the county level. But because the county are subdivision, counties are subdivisions of the state, really the basic principles apply the same. You already have the standard in Idaho Code 31704 that says that the, the responsibility is this board's, uh, duty to, to make changes to those districts if, if you're compelled to do so. Uh, primarily by the census and, and really what you're evaluating is whether or not, uh, the population has adjusted since last time we've been, uh, the, this redistricting was done and determine whether or not the population numbers within those districts are essentially equivalent or, or equal. The, the legal standard to determine whether or not you meet that requirement is about a deviation of 10%. So if one district is, is greater in population by more than 10%, that, that kind of has become the standard for the courts to say, uh, that, that does not meet equal protection. Let me back up just, just one step and explain what that means. The, the equal protection clause of the United States Constitution really governs a lot of things, but certainly it governs, uh, voting, uh, throughout the country. And the equal protection, uh, clause of the, of the constitution requires that, for every one person, their vote should equal, uh, should, should equal the same as, as anybody else's. It's, it's called one person, one vote. And that's the concept of having e- equal population numbers within, within these voting districts. There's a, there's a federal Voting Rights Act as well. And the Voting Rights Act that, that you need to comply with is to assure that as you draw these lines to determine where the districts are, that, uh, a minority's ability is not impaired by the way that the lines are drawn. So if you're splitting, if you're splitting neighborhoods down the middle to ensure that minorities are always going to be a minority within a voting district, then, uh, you're, you're not following the, the Voting Rights Act. This, this type of discrimination applies to racial and language, um, populations, but it's also been applied to, uh, party lines, partisan, partisanship. So, uh, Republican, Democrat lines, uh, need to be taken into account as well, that you're not gerrymandering these lines to ensure that, uh, a Republican, uh, a Republican minority or a Democratic minority is not, uh, is not, uh, ensured that they're always going to be within that minority within, within their voting districts. So, uh, the concept or the steps, really to get to what the question was, what steps do you need to, to follow? You do need to review the census and you need to determine whether or not there's been a population shift within the county that would, that would prompt, uh, a redistricting. Uh, we all know there's, there's been growth in the county since the last, uh, since the last census, but if that growth has been relatively uniform and you stay within that 10%, uh, that 10% criteria, uh, you can, you can just re-adopt the same district lines as you had previously. But if the census shows there's been a shift in population that gets you in that deviation greater than 10%, then you need to take a look at, at where those boundaries are and how you can redraw those lines. Keeping in mind that the goal is to have three equal districts in terms of population and that you don't, uh, you don't impair anybody's, uh, voting rights that's protected by law. So a couple of things that you can do, uh, to help show that, or, or really to create a record to show that you're following the law, there's been, uh, three steps that I would recommend. That as you redraw the lines, that the districts that you, that you do propose are composed of, of contiguous territories. Don't have District One over here and, and, you know, parts and parcels that, you know, throughout the county. That it'd be one contiguous district, um, that the districts be as compact as possible, not, not too large in, in size. And, um, and that you do attempt to preserve the communities of interest. The other thing too, when it comes to partisanship and, and drawing these plans, even though it is, it is ultimately your decision to decide where these, where these lines are drawn, you can call upon both political parties to provide input and information on how best to draw those lines. You have, you have until January prior to the next general election to have the process completed and then finalized in January. That gives, that gives the voters notice of any changes in districts that you're done before any primary elections occur. So you do have, uh, you do have a couple of months to complete the process, but, um, you should have it done and completed and, and then have a public hearing in January to, uh, present the plan, uh, take input from, from, from the community and then decide exactly how you're going to, how you're going to make changes, if any. So it's, it's, it's really not an overly complicated process. I do think that it, it may be a heavy lift in, in reviewing census data and have, and, you know, going through that process. Um, I'm certainly available to help out if needed on some of the legal issues, but, uh, you have, uh, you have until January to complete the process and, and then present it as a public hearing at that time. So, uh, that's, that's the basics. I'm happy to stand for questions if you have any.
Yeah, I've got quite a few. First of all, where do we find this census data?
I don't, I don't know.
Places out there.
Exactly where, where are you going to find?
I've seen a final count, but I've never seen, you know, where they are in the county, where they're living, so.
I would imagine that there, I mean, there's a US Census Bureau that, that conducted the cen- census. I would imagine that their, uh, contact information is available online. We can reach out and get, uh, whatever data that's specific to Valley County and, and just start the process of, of.
And the next question is, um, you know, some places have set up a commission of both, I'm assuming both political parties, maybe there's even an independent. Party that's part of that commission to help with that? Do you, is that something you recommend?
You certainly can. The, i- in 1994, the voters in Idaho, uh, actually changed the constitution that requires a, this, this redistricting, uh, commission. And that is, that is a, that is a legal requirement for legislative districts. And so that's probably what you're familiar with and you have, have heard about because in order to redraw district lines for legislative boundaries, this commission has to be, has to be impaneled. And, and they're the ones that are, are, do the work. The concept being because this is, this can be a partisan issue, they're taking that out of the hands of the legislature and putting a citizen, this citizen panel in charge. That, that requirement has not been imposed at the county levels. Thirty-one 704 is still in place that puts that responsibility on you as the board to do it. If you want to, if you want to mirror what the, what the legislature has to do, you certainly can. I don't think you're, you would be prohibited from doing that, uh, and, and certainly would show, you know, good faith in your, in your efforts to, um, to, to do it right, make sure you're following the law and, and you're involving as many members of the community as, as you can. So if, if you feel like that'd be a good process, I'd certainly encourage that and support that.
At least have a work session and invite both parties in to do that. You know, I question, I don't believe that the census is broken down, most particularly by our districts. Um, I think that, I mean, I would go back to maybe where the last votes were counted. Doug, I don't know, you know, what you can supply as far as voting precincts, but I would think that a percentage of increase in each one of those voting precincts would show us a lot more about growth in certain areas. Personally, you know, if you look at where the growth in Valley County is occurring, I, I would state, I would think there would need to be some adjustment done. McCall's definitely growing faster than Cascade, but Alt, I think you've got Tamrac in yours. Is Tamrac in yours?
We've got so much growth out in the county floor. I think, you know, my, my feeling is that I, I want to do, um, I want to include as many folks as possible from all the different parties. I think that's appropriate. Um, one of the concerns I have is that I don't think that one set of population should have two districts versus the rest of the county having one. To me, that's unfair. And I know that discussion was brought up some years back when they split McCall basically from the highway west and the highway east. And people were kind of concerned about that. Um, and I don't know if we want to go down that road or not. I don't, Doug, Doug, do you know, is anything in GIS would show where new parcels are? I mean, tied into billing permits and I, I don't even know where we're going to get this information, to be honest with you.
I think GIS is definitely.
Well, I was going to say, I think we got to track down the census data first. And then I think, you know, looking at some of the voting records also is a great idea.
But a 19% increase as far as the census goes.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's enough to make me think that we need to at least look at this.
Wasn't it around 2,000 people? It went from ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-eight hundred to 11,000.
Really close to 12,000, yeah.
It's pretty close to 2,000 people. So I'm feeling like this is going to be big. This is going to take a lot of work.
Well, and, and to the extent that, to the extent that there would be some, uh, some idea or motivation to split McCall down, down the middle, that's one of those, that's one of those issues that will be scrutinized closely by the courts to determine whether or not you're splitting up this political subdivision for political purposes, rather than just trying to, to meet the, the one person, one vote standard. If there are other ways to draw the line that keeps political subdivisions intact. And, and of course, this is the, this is the topic of, of most of the court cases that I reviewed in preparation for this discussion was, uh, dividing counties. And, you know, you have large counties like Ada County that's going to have multiple legislative districts within one county. And how, how you split counties has become, you know, one of those things that have been very difficult. So if, if there's a way to do it fairly and avoid doing that, I would certainly recommend that. Uh, but it really comes down to what the data, uh, what the data shows. You need, you need to, you need to review the data, compile it, review it, make sure that you have a good grasp on it. And then do your best to draw the lines in a way that will, um, meet that one, one person, one vote standard.
So I feel, right now, I'm feeling like this is kind of above our pay grade as far as us doing the legwork on this. I think that we need somebody that has experience with GIS and knows where that growth is and those members are that can pinpoint that data pretty tight. Doug, have you ever been involved in this?
Don't forget to use like the homeowners exemption.
No.
And voting records obviously would be great, but the homeowners exemption.
Emma and Ralph, have you guys ever been involved in this?
Living here full time here. Census are, they're full-time residents, they're voting.
Sure. And I've been following some of those meetings and listening to them, but.
And with respect to knowing where the individuals reside, certainly I would think that commission has that information. You take a place like Ada County where there's multiple legislative districts within the county, unlike here. They have to know where each individual is located in order to draw that line, in order to keep the numbers equal. I would suspect, the first place I'd look would contact the commission and say, do you have these data that you can provide us for Valley County? And then we would have a good picture of.
And I'm sure Karen could pull it.
Relative to land mass.
Our GIS tech could pull that within 15 minutes, I'm sure. So, I mean, it's.
So you're not feeling like you want to get a bunch of folks together? You just want to handle it with us three? Is that?
No, I think, I think that we could use the tools that we have, though, and actually get some data compiled and then, you know, work on, on what we need to add to that data. But I, I don't think we need to hire somebody outside.
I think this is right. I mean, we give it to her and say, hey, can you track some of this information down and tell us what we don't have and what we do have? Start with that.
What our office can do, too, is we can pull reports of registered voters within the specific commissioner's boundaries.
Oh.
So we can provide you with that data as well. Being that those individuals that moved into town full-time.
Registering as well.
Correct.
And that way it will give us the political divide anyway, the divisiveness there. And I think, so Brian, my question for you is this, and this is, you know, what keeps coming up. And it hasn't been an issue thus far, but I do understand where people are concerned that there could be two McCall representatives. I mean, because Highway fifty-five, I live on the west side of fifty-five. There could easily be another commissioner on the east side of fifty-five, both living within McCall. And so is that, you know, a division? And I don't, it hasn't happened, Dave's in Donley.
No, as I say, you know, as I say, it seems like it's right now that the original lines are pretty accurate because you've got the huge, you know, district that Elton, that covers a lot of, a lot of the valley. And then you have kind of the consolidated, you know, urban area, if you will, on the west side.
But I, I wonder, you know, I mean, El goes clear to Big Creek in Yellow Pine. Is that really a contiguous district? You know, if you look at that, that really isn't, I mean, honestly, if you went.
Probably needed that.
Vertical lines at that time, yeah.
No, I mean, if you did vertical lines, it would be really skewed here.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems to be east-west, it'd be way better than north-south.
Well, and that's what I was just looking at, the three major steps, preserve communities of interest. To me, that would be more protective of our other two communities.
Yeah. The, I, I mentioned ten percent deviation is your standard. And that is, that is what the courts have defined as the ideal population for voting districts. But they will, they will consider, they will consider deviation greater than ten percent. But the only time they've ever supported that in, in the courts is when you are attempting to keep intact one of those political subdivisions and not divide it. That's, that's one of those, I guess, rare exceptions because, because that, you know, when you're dividing up political subdivisions, there, there's, there's a suspicion or a fear that that's politically or racially motivated rather than just, you know, just arbitrarily drawing a line. So there are, there are some opportunities to, to have one district a little bit larger than another. And, and, and you can do that within the bounds of the law. But it's, it's something that, that I probably I'd work with you on if you want to go bigger than ten percent to make sure we're, we're following the, following the law the best we can. The other thing while I'm, while I'm thinking of it is it's critically important that you make a written record. As you go through this process, make sure you document the, your, your thought process, the steps that you're taking. And, and, and when you get to that January meeting where you're gonna present, present and then vote on the final plan, make sure there's a good written record of that as well.
So you see, excuse me and correct me if I'm wrong, because like I say, I'm new at this too. But the first thing we kind of need is what we have now, where the lines are and the population in those lines. So we got to start from there and then kind of build off of that. And I think Kara's gonna play a huge role because she's gonna be able to manipulate the data and the maps. Here's the same population turned this way versus this way and, and so.
Why don't I reach out to Kara and ask her for existing data and, and existing.
And I think, I'm wondering if this is something that we should do, not during a commissioner meeting. Should maybe set up a commission. We could certainly invite, you know, like the president of the Republicans and the Democrats and independents and have them in on that meeting just to kind of listen. And we need to set some guidelines for who can put input into that commission and who can't. And I don't know if we even want to call it a commission, but I don't think we need to do this during a regular, every Monday meeting. I think this is something that's gonna be extra on the side.
It, it is a big lift, for sure.
Yeah.
But I, I do think you're on the right track. Having some work sessions and getting the input from community members and political parties as well is gonna help ensure that you're creating that record, that you're, you're creating a plan that follows, follows the law. The, the one challenge that I think you will have here is that the, the standard is for qualified electors. We have a lot of second homeowners that have properties here in Valley County that are not registered to vote here or are qualified to vote here in the county. And those, those homes and those people don't necessarily can or should be taken into consideration. It's the, it's the people who are qualified to vote that you, you have to kind of filter, filter that data and, and let that data be the standard for how.
So in order to get that, we need everybody that's registered.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that's the first step is maybe, Doug, your office could get us that list or that. And.
Got to get that on homeowners exemption.
And then you get ahold of Kara and kind of let her know what's coming down the pike on that. And then maybe next week we can formulate a commission or a group of people to sit down. Certainly, hopefully, you'll be on there, we will be on there and start working on this. The other thing that's kind of in the back of my mind is we're also working on a, a boundary change with Idaho County and the Seashore Warren area. But I'm assuming that that's just gonna be like if more people moved into your county. I mean, they'll be, they'll be counted in the next tenure cycle because they've already missed the census for this year, so.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that would just be a normal population growth factor.
Yeah.
That's also in process, too. There's a lot of big lifts going on right now, so. Hey, anybody else have anything they want to add? Emma Ralph?
No, I, I just agree with you. I mean, trying to make a commission that's too large would be too much. Yeah, it would be unwieldy. And the sooner the better because, like we said, you know, the state's been working on this forever. And we've just got a little bit of time to, to do the same thing, so.
And this doesn't change hospital boundaries or school districts or any of that. This is just for the three commissioners.
This is for the three, the three board members on the county commission.
So then, Doug, I guess we'll wait for you on the, on the registered voters' information. And then when you're ready to go, we'll put it all together and have a sit-down and form the group and.
We will have to do them as regular commissioner. We will have to hold separate commissioner meetings. The three of us will be together. So, I mean, we're gonna have to record them and everything else and allow the public, you know, the same conversation.
Be advertised and all that stuff, too? Okay.
Yeah, open, open meetings requirements apply.
I think maybe next week we could set some upcoming meetings.
Yep. Get started on it. Okay, anything else? Any else want anything on this?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for all your work on that.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recess as the Valley County Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Board of Equalization. We have an action item, apparently a, what's the word I'm looking for, June? A request for reassessment. What is it called? What are we looking at here?
We are looking at back taxes, recovered back taxes.
Can I ask?
Recovery of property taxes.
Yes.
Okay, want to make sure I get that right, recovery of property taxes.
Doesn't BOE have to be completed by a certain date? I was confused on that. It is different, okay.
Hey, at this time, I'm gonna ask Larry and Wanda Stevenson to come up to the front table, please. And I believe I need to swear everybody in. I'm not gonna swear at you, I promise. And here's another new one for me. But basically how this is going to work is we're gonna get an explanation from staff. They're gonna go first, okay? And then staff, please stay, please stay, stay standing, raise your right hand and repeat after me. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Do, okay, now you may be seated. The way this works, Larry and Wanda, is you guys have got fifteen minutes to kind of explain your position on this. And then I will ask you to stop and then we will allow staff to give a rebuttal or answer any questions and then we will take the vote after that. Does that work?
Do I get an opportunity to cross-examine?
Um, yeah, I think there is a place where you can rebut anything she says, so. And I would ask that you go to the mic so that we can hear your voice.
Yeah, I have a hearing impairment. I prefer to stay here, but I could.
Doug, are we picking him up? Can you tell?
Yeah, I can turn on the volume.
We also have a mic here in the ceiling with the green light, so try and stay as close to the. And if you have.
Tell her, bring that mic up to where he is.
Good morning. Morning, Jerry.
Morning, thank you.
You guys ready to smell like your sign?
What's that?
I'm not sure what zone, it doesn't make.
I'm Zone One.
You're Zone One. Doesn't make a lot of difference. I noticed they were on your sides.
So at this time, Larry, we're gonna start out. And like I say, you got about fifteen minutes, so at, oh, I'm gonna say about ten, eighteen, ten, twenty, we're, we'll stop, okay? Yep, yeah, that'd be great, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would like to thank the Board of Commissioners for their time today in rendering an informed and lawful decision in this case. Hopefully, we can come to an agreement on the Idaho Code with respect to the proper compliance of all parties as it relates to the homestead laws and the recovery of property tax laws. I present Exhibit A. You want to turn to that?
Got it? Go ahead.
I present Exhibit B, or Exhibit A, sorry. Also shown as Assessor's Exhibit Five. Shows on four twenty-seven, two thousand and ten, Valley County Assessor denied Wanda's first application for homeowner's exemption for two thousand and ten on the grounds of her name was on a joint application in Kenya County with her husband, Larry Stevenson. Exhibit number B, or number B. I've used letters here instead of numbers to not conflict with the assessor. I present appellate's Exhibit B, which also shows, shown as Assessor's Exhibit Eight. Shows that on four eleven, two thousand and eleven, Valley County approved Wanda's second homeowner's exemption application with no conditions or exceptions for tax years beginning two thousand and eleven and on. This exemption has been in effect since Assessor's removal letter of January one twenty-nine, twenty, twenty-one for ten years. I present Exhibit C. I present Exhibit C, which illustrates a legal opinion Kenya County P.A., Carlton Erickson in January nineteenth, two thousand and ten, which I found in June's former's property working files that I acquired on a four twenty, twenty-one surprise public records request, office inspection, as allowed by her P.A. This was a follow-up of my written public records request of June eighteenth, twenty-one and was determined that June did not completely comply with my original six eighteen, twenty-one public records request. I've taken the liberty to make sure that Idaho Code used in this opinion is still in effect today. And it is, see attached current laws sixty-three dash six oh two G and sixty-three dash seven oh one. It's highlighted in paragraph two in this opinion. Page one states the qualifying conditions for entitlement of an exemption which Wanda was owner occupied as qualified and approved for eleven, two thousand and eleven. Now, on, in the opinion, paragraph three and four spells out the conditions for properly filed application. The primary dwelling place, important note here, is address. Is a true, which one thirty fifty-six Eld Lane is not fictitious. Fixed, it's not a mobile home or an RV. Permitted home and principal establishment. Wanda did declare and elect to choose this location as such. Paragraph four, page two of the opinion states or, not and, that occupant resides at this location for six months of the prior year, which Wanda did as recognized and approved by the assessor on four eleven, two thousand and eleven, as shown in appellate's Exhibit B. Paragraph five, page two states that Idaho Code defines the primary dwelling as ambiguous, which means one or more open to more than one interpretation and having a double meaning. The primary dwelling definition is confusing because it states the place where an owner intends to return when absent, which Wanda is clearly the sole owner, I'm sorry, which Wanda has always returned. This case and claim made by the assessor is not about ownership, which Wanda, Wanda is clearly the sole and separate owner of one thirty fifty-six, fifty-six Eld Lane Donley as shown by Valley County recorded deed of five twenty-one, two thousand and eleven, as shown as appellate's Exhibit B. So the bottom line in this case is whether the assessor's administrative allegations of Wanda's usage of this location. These allegations are circumstantial in nature and indirectly point towards guilt, not conclusively proving her primary dwelling. Paragraph eight, page three states and identifies requirements that should be met by the assessor to recover property taxes from an improperly filed homeowner's exemption claim. And Idaho Code sixty-three, six oh two G five subsection C requires that this effort of recovery must commence within seven years, beginning upon the assessment notice reflecting the improper claim of the exemption or not and the original approved exemption in four eleven, two thousand and eleven. Basically, we were seven-year requirement, we're into this thing ten years old. I presented, I present Exhibit D. I recently filed a public records request on Wednesday, October thirteenth, requesting information from June former of the last seven years, two thousand and fifteen through twenty-one, all Valley County assessor cases removing homeowner's exemption for improperly filed claims. She responded none. Also, I requested a complete new homeowner's exemption application kit. I received only one-page application form, which is basically what happened back in two thousand and eleven, with no disclosure of needs, needed qualifications and Idaho Code explanation of what primary dwelling is. It would obviously appear helpful for, to eliminate the time and expense of cases of this nature. In conclusion, based on the appellate's Exhibits A through D and the facts presented, we submit to the BOE that the assessor has not completely complied with Idaho Code sixty-three a six oh two G five C and is not entitled to collect and recover their claim of forty-eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents, including penalties and interest and back taxes. As to the assessor's allegations of. As to the assessor's allegations of Wanda's proper use of occupancy of 13056 Eld Lane, unfortunately, the legal opinion in County County does not offer any court cases for interpretation of the Idaho Code defining primary dwelling. I can only assume no cases exist. So I did further research on homeowner's exemption cases with the Idaho BTA, which I can offer as Exhibit E if desired. A BTA case number 17-A-1003 was rendered in October of 2017, which provided some court case interpretation of primary residence, which is remarkably like that of existing case law of domicile. This case concluded that domicile is a location where a person is physically present as and regards his home, true fixed primary home. In other words, this is a declaration and election by the property owner, which Wanda did back in April 2011 when applying for Valley County homeowner's exemption, which has been the only county she has applied for in Idaho as required by law. Case law presents that case law points to residence is not the same as domicile or primary residence. Case law further shows that a person can have multiple locations, reside in multiple locations, but only have one primary residence. A mere change of residence, even if for continued timeframe, does not affect the change of domicile or primary residence. Domicile persists until another legal is acquired and declared. Wanda is the deeded sole and separate owner of 13056 Eld Lane. He has not declared or acquired any other primary dwelling or domicile in any other Idaho county. Based on the Appellants' presentation of facts and Idaho Code, proper interpretation of the law, we respectfully request that the recovery of property taxes be withdrawn and Wanda's 2021 and homeowner's exemption be reinstated as soon as ruled by the DOC. Wanda is currently in compliance with all residential complaints by the assessor and documented in June Fulmer's property files. In closing, most citizens would like to, or like all elected officials to be more a fair and reasonable advocate and serve the taxpayers as opposed to being an adversary and attempting to rule over people who elected them into office. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? I got a few, just so I know it's straight in my head. Larry and Wanda, you two are married?
Yes.
Okay. And you're living together now?
Well, yeah.
That's a yes?
Well, yeah, we're living together.
Larry, this, the addition of Exhibit E, this was not provided prior to this.
Would you like to see that?
So I have it, but it was not provided prior to this, so our legal council has now had an opportunity to review this. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, none of the exhibits were provided prior to this.
Okay.
Okay, then at this time, there's no more questions for the applicant. June, we'll let you go.
Who has legal counsel for Valley County?
Brian Oakey in the back.
Brian?
Brian Nagle is our prosecuting attorney. Brian Oakey is our deputy.
Civil.
Right.
I sent copies of all of my information to you on Friday because we do have 15 minutes to present. So what I have handed you right now is the exact same thing that I sent on Friday, but it's just summarized. So I would like to just touch on a few of my exhibits. I did not provide you a copy of the exhibits because you have it on your computer. So my Exhibit Three was dated February 10th of 2010 and it showed that the two properties at 13056 Eld Lane, Donley, Idaho were purchased jointly by Larry D. and Wanda K. Stevenson, husband and wife, whose current address at that time was 15769 Yoder Avenue, Caldwell, Idaho. Exhibit Four dated April 2nd of 2010 was a quitclaim from Larry D. Stevenson to Wanda L. Stevenson for the two properties at 13056 Eld Lane. Exhibit Five was dated April 5th of 2010, which Mr. Stevenson showed that Mrs. Stevenson applied for the homeowner's exemption on, it was dated April 2nd of 2010, we received it on April 5th. It was denied at that time. A letter was sent April 27th of 2010, denying it because at the time, Mrs. Stevenson still jointly owned the home at Yoder Lane in Caldwell with her husband. My Exhibit Seven was dated March 21st of 2011. It was a quitclaim deed from Wanda K. Stevenson to Larry D. Stevenson for Lot 3, Block 3, and Yoder First Subdivision, 15769 Yoder Avenue, Caldwell, Idaho. Exhibit Eight dated April 11th of 2011, which was not quite a full month after she quitclaimed. Valley County Assessor received a homeowner's exemption application for Wanda Stevenson, signed April 8th of 2011. That exemption was granted at that time. DeeDee did check with Caldwell and the property in Caldwell was in Mr. Stevens' name only. Mrs. Stevens did provide us with a local mailing address. On April 26th of 2020, the Valley County Assessor's Office received a complaint from a neighbor of Wanda K. Stevenson's, reporting that Mrs. Stevenson was committing fraud. Mr. Stevenson had told the neighbor that both Mrs. Stevenson and Mr. Stevenson lived in Caldwell and had the houses in separate names to get the homeowner exemption on both houses. Neighbor preferred not to give their name because they were concerned about potential ramifications from Mr. Stevenson. I did provide copies of that documentation. I have never followed up on a homeowner's like I have on this one. I had to because I received a complaint from a property owner. It is my duty and my job to follow through. So I did. I started investigating. My Exhibit 10 was for the copies of driver's license history. Mrs. Stevenson in 2013, 17, and 20 had driver's licenses issued to the 15769 Yoder Avenue, Caldwell. On June 18th of 21, after we had removed the homeowner's exemption, she did go over to the sheriff's office here and changed the address for her physical address on her driver's license. No new driver's license was issued, but she did change it. My Exhibit 11 was the voter records that I requested, and Mrs. Stevenson has been a registered voter in Canyon County since 1980. She was still a registered voter in Canyon County in 2020, and in 6/18 of 21, the same day she changed her driver's license address, she registered to vote in Valley County. And I would like to say that this information that I received from Canyon County was all encrypted when I received it. I did have to provide a passcode to be able to open the files. So in 11 of 2020, I did verify tax filing status for Wanda Stevenson. She and Mr. Stevenson have filed joint returns using the 15769 Yoder Avenue. Based on that information, it was determined in January of 21 that I would send Mrs. Stevenson a letter informing her that we were going to be removing the homeowner's exemption for assessment year 21. Certified letter was sent out and it was returned to the Valley County Assessor unclaimed because it sat in the Donley post office and they returned it to us. It was never claimed. Plus, I understood that Mrs. Stevenson's box had also temporarily been closed because she hadn't renewed it yet. So in May, Mr. Stevenson called and wanted to know what was happening with our values. I addressed his answers the best that I could, but I requested to speak with Mrs. Stevenson. He said she was not there. He wanted to know why I wanted to talk to her and I explained that I need to speak to her about her homeowner's exemption. You do have copies of the documentation of those phone calls, I will not get into that. On May 27th of 21, at the request of Mr. Stevenson, I sent a copy of my original letter that I had sent in January to Mrs. Stevenson. At the guidance of our prosecuting attorney, I sent four identical letters, two to the Caldwell address, one certified, one regular mail, two to the Donley address, one certified, one regular mail. The certified letter that I sent to Donley was returned, it was never picked up. I don't know if the one in Caldwell got picked up, I didn't get that receipt back. So again, in August, I verified the tax filing status again, just to make sure with the State Tax Commission, they had filed joint returns using Caldwell as their address. So in August, I received a letter from Larry Stevenson regarding the notice of recovery of property tax. He requested a hearing with the Board of Equalization. Again, I sent four identical letters, two to Caldwell, two to Donley, one certified, one regular mail. The certified letter that I sent to Donley was returned to our office on October 4th, it had never been picked up. In my exhibit, I have given you copies of the code. Idaho Code is very, very clear. 63-602G, and I highlighted it, number two, the exemption allowed by this section may be granted only if the homestead is owner occupied and is used as the primary dwelling. 63-701, number six, I also highlighted that one. That one says occupied means actual use and possession. 63-602G, five, recovery of property taxes. Recovery of property tax exemptions allowed by this section but improperly claimed or approved, upon discovery of evidence, facts, or circumstances indicating an exemption allowed by this section was improperly claimed or approved, the county assessor shall decide whether exemption claimed should have been allowed and, if not, notify the taxpayer in writing, which I did, assess a recovery of property tax and notify the county treasurer of this assessment, which I did. Down under number C, it says the assessment and collection of the recovery of property tax must begin within the seven-year period beginning the date the assessment notice reflecting the improperly claimed or approved exemption was required to be mailed to the taxpayer, which was 21. We went back to 2015. Based on this information and the facts that I have presented today, I am respectfully requesting the Board to uphold the recovery of property tax for years 2015 through 2020. Our original amount was $4,833.69 plus any additional accrued penalty and interest due
Okay, any questions for June?
I have some.
Just a minute, Larry, we'll let you in from up here. Any questions, any concerns? So basically, by any, going back seven years, we're not gonna be able to go back to 2020 when this was initially given to them, correct?
21, we denied the homeowner's exemption.
But they got it in...
Twenty. We got it from 11 to 20.
So we have...
We're only going back to 15.
Five years there that we are not gonna be able to get back, okay? Any other questions for June? Okay, Larry, at this time, I'll allow you, or if you want to rebut two, three minutes, please come up to the mic and if you have something that you don't think is correct, please let us know.
June, on my response letter I sent to you, do you remember the details of page two, the second paragraph?
I'm looking at it.
Okay. I tried to explain the circumstances here with this anonymous complaint. The neighbor, basically, in June of 2020, he and I were sitting on his front porch, went out and there was the, Edward's mosquito and beat mcguy came in and I was instructed he could go into my driveway, spray, get further back because we have quite a mosquito problem there. So I went out and talked to him, he said, "No, I can't do that, it's a 150-foot rule." So I says, "Well, your supervisor said we could." So we got into a little tough there. So when I went back to Dan, Dan...
Chairman, I don't think this has anything to do with what's...
Let's come to the point here. I don't wanna draw this up.
I'm coming to the point that we have an anonymous complaint that really isn't legitimate. He was upset retaliating against me, not Wanda. So in October of 2020, he went down with his wife to the assessor's office, made a complaint. This gentleman is really retaliating. He assaulted me in his home on, as I explained, on July 5th, 2020, which we have an assault claim battery going on with Brian at this time.
Mr. Stevens, I really don't think that that's appropriate to bring up in this council. What we're looking at is the legal identification of this process. How it came to light is really not important to me at all. You know, dispute with a neighbor, you can go to court on that outside of this. It doesn't have any bearing on this case.
All I'm saying is we don't have a credible complaint here by my neighbor.
However it came to light, we're now reviewing the facts of the case.
And I noticed they're not here today for any cross-examination.
And again, this is the facts of the case.
We don't do that kind of stuff here, Larry, that's not what we're set up for.
And that's understandable.
Do you deny any of the facts written down in June's letter as far as driver's license and any of that that you have a concern with?
Yeah, her presentation is very factual on what happened. Basically, we had some type of, some clerical errors where the driver's license didn't get renewed up here when it came up for renewal because we ruined every year. The voting thing, she basically, there's only a third... which 12, you asked the tax commission for tax returns and things, and the tax commission responded back that this was an address, not a primary address, not a domicile. It was just an address that Wanda had, which she has had previous years prior to we splitting the community property up in 2010, I believe. It was just habit of filing a joint return, obviously because of tax savings reasons.
But you don't deny the fact that you filed taxes jointly?
Yes, we did. And that's not prohibited in the law, either, on homeowner's exemption.
No, but I think that sets the stage along with where you renew your driver's license, where you get your mail that determines whether or not this is your primary residence.
She was getting her mail, P.O. Box 922.
To me, that what you're trying to do is both you claim a homeowner's on your two separate residences, which in the state of Idaho is illegal. You can't do that.
Site the code on it. There's nothing in the Idaho code that says husband and wife can't have two exemptions.
Only if you're divorced. I've never seen that before.
Well, nothing in the code. We've looked at the code here. There's nothing in there that says about it. What it says about is one person can't have two exemptions. Wanda doesn't have two exemptions. I don't have two exemptions.
I think the question in my mind is the owner-occupied, and I question that Wanda's living up here on her own as her primary residence. I believe that you are living together in Canyon County. This is your?
But I'm up here six months of the year.
That's not what it says. I mean, that's, what it's saying is this is your, you identify this as your primary residence.
No, address, a primary residence.
As your primary owner-occupied dwelling.
You're talking about the code there.
I am talking about the code. Correct.
Nothing in June's exhibits identify 15769 Yoder is her primary address. It's mine. There's two primary addresses here.
Now, I guess I'm asking, June, you are identifying this in Valley County as your primary residence, owner-occupied primary residence.
Up here, it says, it states that I have to be here six months, at least six months of the year, and I am.
It actually states you're identifying this as your primary residence. You've done everything now to bring that up in '21.
Well, but I've had, my license has been, not my driver's license, but my car license has been up here for a long time.
Everybody in Ada County licenses their car up here because you don't have something everybody does.
I think the only way this is ever going to work is if you guys get completely divorced. I think that's, honestly, that's the way it works.
But that doesn't say in the law.
I do have a question for our legal counsel. So, they did this community property split, which I don't even know is legal in the state of Idaho because it is community property state through quitclaim. I believe that you have to take title as sole and separate property, sole and separate owner, to take property in the state of Idaho, not under a quitclaim deed.
Quitclaim deed is acceptable. Why isn't it?
There's different deeds out there, and they're used for different purposes. Well, that's your opinion, Larry. Mine is, is that it has to be taken as sole and separate property. So, I don't, there's some legal questions behind that. I, I too question, you know, driver's license are not renewed every eight years. They've been renewed three times. So, every single time you renewed your driver's license, it's been renewed three times since this was enacted. You had an opportunity to make that change, and it wasn't, it didn't happen.
Driver's license in her case are renewed every eight years.
As they've been every three. It's been renewed in the records that we have in front of us right now.
Can I see that record?
Sure. Exhibit 10 was issued in 7 of 2013, 4 of 2017, and 10 of 2020. So, it has been renewed three times in this process, okay? Not once. I can understand it if it was an eight-year renewal and it was just coming up and you just did it, but once this came to light, you made that change, okay?
And the same thing with being a registered voter, you're still registered down in Canyon County.
Thing with being a registered voter, yeah.
Until June of this year.
June of this year. That kind of shows me that I think you guys are still together. This is not your primary residence. You don't seem to get mail at Donley because we got all that back, so.
Not all of it.
No, that's not true because I did sign it. What happened in last year, I applied in January because it comes due every March for my box, post office box, and I applied in January and filled out the paperwork. Well, then they lost it, and that was last year, not this year. And then I, but this year, I am trying to get it renewed soon enough, and that's why some of it, but I did sign for some of it up here because there was a register letter that I did sign for up here.
We didn't get that back. There is no, there's no documentation.
Post office lady, I signed the card she gave me, so.
Usually with certified mail, we get a piece of that back that actually shows your signature on it, so we don't have that documentation.
He had me sign it. I signed it.
Yeah.
So.
And I think, that being said, June's records are not complete here, as I found when I did the surprise public records request. She signed certified letter in Donley for her letter. I signed down in Caldwell for her letter because she was sending to both places. And obviously, there was some confusion on her part because the box was temporarily closed up here because we've had that happen two or three times. If you don't get in there, get the paperwork filed, they close the box, change the lock, we've always retained and got back P.O. Box, or Wanda has, 922. That's never changed. Original application.
And usually, the reason why a post office closes the box is because there's no mail coming to it.
There's mail coming.
No activity of the box, so that's why they closed it.
Renewal. We don't have mail delivered to her address so you can get a free box. What happens here is if you don't renew each year that box, they'll give it to somebody who has to pay.
You signed a certified letter made out to your wife?
Yes.
I didn't know that was legal.
June?
Exhibit 18 of August 3rd, 2021, there were three certified letters sent. Two came back unclaimed on August 3rd. The one that went to Mrs. Stevenson in Donley was claimed and signed for by Mrs. Stevenson, and the one that I sent to Caldwell was signed by Mr. Stevenson. Out of three certified letters, one was claimed, two were returned unclaimed.
That's because of the box.
And the last one that was returned was the one that I sent in September of this year.
For clarification here for the commissioners and June, if you do not get to the post office within 15 days, they automatically return it to sender.
If you're living here, why would you not go to the post office within 15 days? That's your mail.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I'm sorry.
Like I said, circumstantial.
Larry, I think the intent here is what is really bothering me. Can you imagine if we had every second homeowner that lived up here and had a house down in Boise tried to do this same thing? I don't think that's the intent of what the law is. You guys are getting the exemption in Canyon County for your house down there, and I think that's only fair. But I think what you're trying to do here is, to me, a little bit shady. So, I'm going to make the motion that we deny this, and you guys have an opportunity to challenge this. If you want to go to the state B.O.E., if you want to go to district court, we can go that far with it as well, and do let me finish, sir, please. Will you please let me finish? Thank you. If everybody did this, our whole system would collapse.
Everybody's not doing it.
And I think it's wrong.
This is the only case of this nature that June has done in the last seven years.
So, I'm going to make the motion that we deny this and request, or make a motion to uphold the recovery of property taxes for the years 15 through 20, $4,833.69.
I'll second that motion, and so I would just say that I think that the assessor's office did a very good job documenting all of this, and I do appreciate that information. I think that, you know, as you said, driver's license, double exemption, voter records all show that this is not a primary residence.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hold on a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You want any of this stuff back, Larry?
Uh, yes.
I can keep a copy. I'll keep a copy. Okay, our next agenda item is not till 11:30, so we've got quite a bit of time if anybody needs a break.
Let's go and take that 11 o'clock.
You have to get that from the post office. I do not have anything to do with those.
You can send your letter first.
Well, Mr. Stevenson will send you a letter, note finding out the decision of the commissioners, and then it provides you with the process. This is my first time for this type of letter to be submitted regarding back property taxes. I'm going to contact the Board of State Tax Appeals to make sure that this, in fact, goes to them. I don't know if that's the process, if, so I'll need to research to determine what the official process is.
You're welcome.
So, we have about 16 minutes before our next agenda item. If you need a break?
Do you want to do that executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do it at 11.
You can actually go in now if you want, Mr. Chairman.
You guys need a break, or are we good?
We're good.
You good?
I'm good this one day.
Answered on that, entertain a motion to go into executive parado code 742061C.
I move that we go into executive session, parado code 742061C.
I'll second that.
Moving segment by roll call.
Bing and I.
Mop and I.
Asbrook, I, and Doug, we're going to be in at about 10:45.
We're doing all the motions today, so. Apologies.
I guess it never hurts to try, huh?